One of the members that I told him, so resigned from manager.
All right, so I call this meeting of the Hamtramck City Council to order. It is Tuesday, September 13, 2022, and it's 7:03 PM. Would the clerk call the rules, please?
Uh, Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Choudhury.
Present.
Councilwoman Jakowski.
Present.
Mr. Mayor.
Present.
Councilman Rafai is not present, Councilman Al Brehmaq is not present, Councilman El Samir is not present, Mr. Mayor, we have quorum.
All right, thank you. Let's raise our flag for allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any community announcements?
I have a couple.
Yes, Councilwoman.
All right, so first of all is tomorrow is the Hamtramck Mutual Aid and Block Club's monthly meetings. The Hamtramck Mutual Aid meeting is meeting at the Library Community Garden. If it rains, it will move to Book Suey at 6:00 PM. The Block Club is meeting immediately after at Book Suey at 7:00 PM. And then there's also a couple events to put on your calendars for later this month and next month. And it would be the Sunday in the Alley, which is a Joe Louis Greenway exhibition. So you can kind of see what's going to be coming through the alley on Joseph Campo. It'll be behind Olamont at September 25th. The demonstration and tables question answer will be there from 12 to 4:00 PM. There's a citywide cleanup, which are you in? Do you have more?
I don't.
Okay, so September 24th is going to be a citywide cleanup. We're going to meet at 10:00 AM at City Hall. So here at City Hall, it'd be great to see everyone out there to get, you know, the city cleaned up before winter comes. And also the Hamtramck Neighborhood Arts Festival will be on October 8th. And that's like anyone that's an artist can submit and they'll be put on a map. You can go check out like either their studio or they might put it outside, but they're going to have different demonstrations all around the city. But if you're an artist interested in doing that, they are accepting those registrations right now to make the map. So they usually circulate it for like three weeks. So if that's something you're interested in, get on it pretty soon. And if you need help, let me know. I can get you in contact with them. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, quick update. I have some information that a former council member, Ever Rojak, passed away on September 10th. Apparently the visitation was today and the funeral's tomorrow morning at 9:30 at Queen of Apostles Church. I didn't have the pleasure of knowing him, but I figured it would announce it at least.
No more announcements? All right, we'll move to the proclamations, recognitions, and presentations. And we'll start with proclamation for Hamtramck Labor Day Festival. And I'll go ahead and read this one. City of Hamtramck proclamation honoring all the hardworking Labor Day festival and parade volunteers. Whereas in coordination with the Hamtramck Centennial celebrations, a week, a weekend-long Labor Day festival and centennial parade were held on September 2nd to September 5th, 2022. And whereas the Hamtramck festival was first proposed in 1980 by former mayor Robert Cozeren to boost the spirit of the residents of Hamtramck in times of crisis. And ensuring years, the festival became the Hamtramck Labor Day Festival. And whereas in recent years, the Labor Day festival is planned and executed by Conrad Mazuragoras and Shannon Loyal, along with a group of dedicated volunteers such as Scott Collins, McKay Lyons, Katie Balones, Frank Watt, Jalen Watt, Jessica Arben, Kenan Baik, Frank and Shelley Woodman, Michael Davis, and Rice Jeffrey Jabloniski, Julie Silos, Jeff Horner, and John Shamoniski, who deserve extraordinary amount of credit and gratitude for their efforts executing this event. And whereas the Labor Day festival gives ample opportunities to local businesses, places of worship, community organizations, local artists, and more, to show their commitment and involvement to the city of Hamtramck. And whereas the first annual Hamtramck Labor Day parade was put together by this group of volunteers to celebrate the city's centennial additional history of the city of Hamtramck, as well as display the beautiful diversity of the current population. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of city of the city of Hamtramck extend our sincerest gratitude to the Hamtramck Labor Day Festival volunteers and encourages the community to continue to support their efforts in making the Hamtramck community better year after year. Thank you. The next one is.
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge that we have both Conrad, Shannon here, and I believe there's other festival organizers here as well. I fail, I don't know their names.
Thank you. Always very successful festival for the first time.
The old man, everybody had a good time.
It's amazing this year.
Thank you. All right, the next, the next one is the Rail Safety Week 2022 proclamation. Councilwoman, you can read that one, please.
So City of Hamtramck proclamation for National Rail Safety Week. Whereas 2,148 rail grade crossings collisions resulted in 658 personal injuries and were responsible for 238 fatalities in the United States during 2021. And whereas 1,151 trespassing incidents have occurred in the United States, resulting in 528 pedestrians being killed and another 623 injured while trespassing on railroad property rights of way during 2021. And whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad rights of way are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways, and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of fatalities and injuries. And whereas the International Association of Chief of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of National Rail Safety Week. Therefore, he, Amr Galib, the mayor of the city of Hamtramck, do hereby attest his full support, proclaiming September 19th through 25th, 2022, to be National Rail Safety Week and encourages all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education.
Thank you. The third one is proclamation, the George Lucas Talk Show. And the clerk will read it, please.
Sure. City of Hamtramck proclamation, the George Lucas Talk Show Day in Hamtramck. Whereas the George Lucas Talk Show is a very silly, fun, positive improvised talk show in New York City. And whereas the show is hosted by comedian Connor Ratliff, who appears as George Lucas, the creator of Star Wars, and he interviews real guests as themselves in a panel format. And whereas Ratliff launched the show in the spring of 2014 at the UCB Theater East Venue in New York City with Sean Distin playing Jar Jar Binks as co-host. And whereas Collier called the show "a bit of sunlight streaming into our lives", and they were featured in Rolling Stones and talked about on Seth Meyers. And whereas Connor Ratliff hosts the show as George with Griffin Newman as his sidekick, Waddo, and they interview real guests like a normal talk show. And whereas guests have included Seth Meyers, Weird Al Yankovic, Whoopi Goldberg, Jon Hamm, Darcy Carden, Rachel Zegler, Ahmed Best, Kevin Smith, and Leah Thompson, and so many more. And whereas the city of Hamtramck is pleased to welcome the George Lucas Talk Show at Planet Ant Theater on September 17th, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved, Honorable Mayor and the city council of the city of Hamtramck do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2022, is a George Lucas Talk Show Day in Hamtramck and call upon all residents of Hamtramck to come out and check out the show.
Now we have the award from the Common World Alliance.
Mr. Mayor, we have Imam Erafuch with us today to present the award on behalf of the Common World Alliance. If Erafuch would like to come up to the podium and.
Just thank you. Good evening, Assalamualaikum.
Just one moment.
Good evening, Assalamualaikum, our mayor, council members, city manager chief, our.
See you.
City attorney, thank you, clerk, our police chief replacement, and every one of you. Amin Amari Foush, founder and president of two interpatrialization, which is national and international, Common World Alliance clergy interpatrialization, and Ministry of Spirituality and Society for Humanity, bought on form in city of Hamtramck, thanks God. And my activities started in city of Hamtramck 25 years ago since I came to America. As volunteer, I work as a full-time employee in our community, which is my honor to serve this beautiful city. And I'm so thankful to our city manager, Max Garbreno, as police officer, as police chief, to support our activities. And other officials, current police chief, Anne Moise, you, Mayor Galib, and your council members team, as well as previous mayors, former mayor Karen Dr. Majewski, former mayor Tom Jankowski, former mayor Gary Zich, police chief Mark Kalinavsky, and police chief Doyle, fire chiefs, schools superintendent Tom Nichai, and his team, educators, and students, our charter schools, their educators, students, and principals, many others as well as Hamtramck Public Library and Community Center. I really appreciate you all on behalf of our both governing teams and bringing you greetings from our hearts for our continued corporation, collaboration. I cannot forget our local politicians as a former state representative, Rosemary Robinson, for her support to Common World Alliance, for her late son, state representative Isaac Robinson, who was to me like my brother, and to many of us in our community, in our district, as well. Wayne County Commissioner Martha G. Scott, former state senator, current Wayne County Executive War and Events, and former Wayne County Executive Robert Ficano. Those peoples help us to make Hamtramck beautiful as Hamtramck now is, along with you and the Sackra Club in Hamtramck, as well Yala organization, Dyan organization. I have to mention our neighboring states, organized states, who sent us their students from seminars and universities from city of Mississippi, from state of Mississippi, Missouri, Iowa, Illinois, Ohio, and Yana, and New York. In 10 years, in 12 years of Common World Alliance activities, we organized more than 50 citywide cleanups with yourselves, with brothers and your cousins. And I cannot enough thank our volunteers and all residents in city of Hamtramck who ever participate in any of our activities that we have done. I'm so proud of our police enforcement, Detroit Police Department. I really appreciate them for their service, for providing safety, that we are now free to walk on those beautiful streets, that we took care of them. And I look forward to continue our activities along with you brothers and sisters. And I call on our residents of Hamtramck to be proud Hamtramckans, to be proud Americans. This is our home, and this is our country. And we need to take care of our community like we do of our own housing. And also, we need to improve our own housing that complies with the city ordinances, that looks everything much better, that no other city can be better than ours. In my international conferences, when I say that I'm from Hamtramck or Detroit, I don't have to say state of Michigan or country of America, as many others from other states are recognized, invited to the podium, and 50, 60,000 people to speak, and they are announced that they are from any other state of the United States. That is our honor to be from any state. We honor to be Americans. But nothing is known more than Detroit and Hamtramck. Hamtramck is known by our beautiful diversity with more than 40 countries, people that has, that they settled selves in Hamtramck like I and you. Many were born here, but their parents or grandparents came from somewhere. And that is what makes this Hamtramck beautiful. And we are proud Hamtramckans. And I cannot forget Detroit Mayor Mike Duggan for supporting our activities, his entire team, and Cosmos Car Dancer as well. My activities are not only in Hamtramck, as I mentioned, those people in surrounding Hamtramck. Also late Congressman John Conyers and late Congressman John Dingels. That was my right hands to get volunteers, and I was mentored by them how to get involved in Hamtramck, in community. And I'm so thankful for all of those who passed. May God bless their souls, and may God support us and protect us all of any negativity as we were afraid of coronavirus, COVID-19, that all of us will die. But God said, no, you are my children, and I protect you and take care of you. He did. We strongly believe in God, whether we are in governmental institutions, in our places of worship, in our schools, if there is no God, there will be shooters. So I encourage you to bring God even in schools, in lockers, on our sport fields, and everywhere. Better to have a God either than shooters and losing our lives of our children. Tomorrow is betterment for all of us by our work. And again, I would like to thank you for allowing me to come here to present you this award to the city of Hamtramck, to all of those ever Hamtramck been formed as a city, and our congratulations. Congratulations, Hamtramckans, 100th anniversary. And I'm proud to be of this anniversary, even I did not hear 100 years, but 25, that is modern of 100. So continue, we will make Hamtramck, God willing, in safer 100 years ahead and more. Mayor, would you please receive this award, and council members? I would like to ask you if you would like to come take a picture with this award. Let me just read awards. Common World Alliance clergy interpatrialization, Ministry of Spirituality and Society for Humanity, issuing certificate of education to the city of Hamtramck for promoting beautification and safety, advocating for diversity and native cultures, stimulating education and industrial growth, investing in infrastructure, and supporting economic development. Common World Alliance and MASH Worldwide Convention, 2022, July 8, 2022, in the city of Hamtramck, county of Wayne, state of Michigan. Signed by my name, Imam Amari Foush, founder and president of both organization, Common World Alliance clergy interpatrialization, and Ministry of Spirituality and Society for Humanity. For our city, God bless you, thank you for accepting this.
He's the call is down for all of us.
It's good, I'm a little bored, it's ready.
All right, say cheese. All right, that's a good one.
Thank you very much. I would appreciate if you hang them up on your hallway as you were talking and.
We'll get that out tomorrow.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And also, if you would like a mandate that is not removable from the city of Hamtramck, because that is city of very property now, not of any elected or employees. So thank you very much on that for accept, for accepting this token from us. God bless you, and God bless all city employees, also our judges. Judge Baruk from 31st District Court, former judge here, and the current judge, Kra. I really appreciate them also for their support to our activities. Thank you all for all downstairs, all laws, and tools, and things. I really appreciate you all. Cannot say enough thank you, but thank you from my heart and on behalf of both governments.
All right, we move to the addition, divisions, agenda approval. Do we have any additions and divisions? No? All right, then we move to the public input.
St. James' Mayor, Mr. Conrad.
Hello.
Three minutes.
I have a problem here. On behalf of the festival committee, I would like to say thank you for the proclamation. And I would also like to thank personally, publicly, the festival committee that was, that sacrificed quite a bit of their summer time, sweat, tears, and at times blood on Joseph Campo this past weekend to have this festival for everyone over here. The festival doesn't happen without the dedicated volunteers in our committee. I'm glad and very happy to be able to consider the committee members my friends, and most of the time I consider them my family. Yes, we do argue, we do fight, but all in all, we do get together at the end, we get along. So thank you once again, thank you to our committee members, to everybody that was named in the proclamation. And then I'd also like to thank the former mayor, Karen Majewski, Tierra Jankowski, and our former city clerk, August Gitschlag, for their participation and for August Gitschlag for allowing us all to throw war balloons at him, because that's one of our favorite parts of it.
Mr. Mayor, just, I know I saw somebody else holding one. Did anybody want to speak before? No?
Okay, that's all for public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda. And we have item A, approval of minutes from the August 23rd, 2022 Regent City Council meeting. B, approval of a registered date ending September 13, 2022. C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending September 13, 2022. D, resolution 2022-109 approving Michigan Land and Water Trust grants. E, approve, uh, resolution 2022-110 approving street closure for fire department open house. F, resolution 2022-111 approving request for street closure to fill an application. City, God forgot about, God never forgets anything, I don't know what they're talking about. Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Objections? All right, we'll move to the all business. And we have item A, resolution 2022-90 approving industrial facilities exemption certificates for Z Box Global LLC at 8801 Conan. Can I get a motion to open the hearing? No, this is.
It's a motion.
Yeah, motion.
A motion to open discussion.
Second.
All right, discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So the resolution we have, it is the good resolution or it is the amended resolution?
It's the amended.
Amended.
The one on file is the amended, that's where we ended. So you're either going to vote on that or amend that resolution back to.
I did not brought my laptop here. So, Mr. Manager, can you educate us, which one we are going to forward today?
So on the agenda today, as the clerk just stated, is the amended resolution that council members at the four, two meetings ago amended back to the lower years. I believe it was six total at that point. The original resolution called for eight plus two for a total of 10. For your convenience, we added the original resolution back online here for it. But depending upon what you wanted to do, you could make amendment to go back, you could pass the one as is. I'm not really sure. Obviously, it's your pleasure.
Okay, so I got it. So the, this is the one, amended one. We have to amend again or we have to vote for no?
Amend again.
Amend again. So, Mr. Chair, I like to amend the resolution what we have previously amended. I want to go back to the original resolution. As, as what is the number of?
Eight plus two.
Eight plus two. There is no confusion after that. So again, I'm amending this resolution, go back to the original resolution, eight plus two.
One second.
So.
Now we vote on the original.
Unless you guys want to discuss it, you either discuss or you just vote.
I think we've discussed this fairly at length.
Hold on, I might go and discuss. Mr. Chair, so we are back to the original resolution.
Do we still have, we still have to vote?
Yeah, yeah.
We brought it forward, but we still have a voting, new amendment to go back, correct?
Yes.
Well, then we have to do it now.
No, no, so right now.
I don't want to discuss with that one.
Okay. So can I call the votes, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Councilwoman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Choudhury?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
All yeses, Mr. Mayor, would you like to vote? Okay. Amendment to the original resolution 2290 has been approved. Now we are back to the original, so start fresh.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to bring the original, I have to make a motion again. Or, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to bring the original resolution right now as eight plus two.
It's already, you already opened up the discussion, yeah, so now.
It's a discussion.
You can discuss, yeah, the motion was already made to open on, because of, yeah.
Mr. Chair, so I'd like to support this resolution. This building from the long time, my brother-in-law tried to buy this one a long time ago. And he go back again because financially issue. The gentleman, I never know him, I still don't know him, I know who is he. But the who came to Hamtramck, tried to help us, open the business. I heard 50 employees will be there. There is the, our residents, ourselves, we have to know. Every year I pay my salary 1% to the Hamtramck City. So, and also employer, anybody works in Hamtramck, they have to pay also tax. There's the, the tax coming from the 50 employees, long time we didn't have nothing. So something somebody want to bring to us, improve the Hamtramck, given to us, pulling the tax. In that case, we have to help them to come here, establish their business. That's why I feel, and one day maybe could be the, it could be the 100 million business improvement and look for. And that time he could give us something as a gift, or like a councilman, Naam Sodarisa, to help the clean up the street, give the some donation, and then complete other things. So it could be happen when somebody exist in the business. But somebody have to come to do the business, then he will get something, then he can return. Before he didn't get the business from us, how he going to return? So I like to appreciate the, the company, Z Box Company, to came here, thinking about Hamtramck and open the business. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I just want to kind of add a couple of short comments to, I concur with Councilwoman Hassan on the majority of these things. I think that this is one of those situations where we negotiated a certain contract, or a certain idea with them, and that in order to continue to attract businesses to the city of Hamtramck, we have to show that we're not going to arbitrarily change things during meetings. I do want to just note that this is one of the more contentious things that the council has addressed, or like this current body. And I want to thank my fellow council members for maintaining civility and, you know, relying on like knowledge and thought during this and not resorting to personal attacks, as I've seen in previous instances where there has been tension. So I just want to call attention to the fact that this was discussed in a very adult manner, and I very much appreciate that. And I look forward to continuing to attracting, to attract new businesses to the city of Hamtramck in different ways and show that we are a business-friendly city that is open to increasing our revenue streams. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
It is shown here that they set 75 new jobs, where it was 50.
There's more than that.
Well, my colleague's already spoken and everything, I just wanted to welcome Gbox, the entrepreneur and economic business, right? I met him before and I like that idea to bring businesses and revenue to the city. You know, we don't have much to offer, but we want to extend our hands, our ability to bring businesses and revenues. So I appreciate it much, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we can go on the vote now?
Can we motion again for the final, so you already motioned?
Yeah.
So I did a second for the amended resolution.
That's what it was.
The motion in second.
The same motion carried, right?
Well, the thing is they motioned originally on the amended resolution. And then they amended the resolution.
Yeah, I did, that's why I tried to open it, it is a second.
I listened to the discussion, so now just the vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to vote on this?
Yeah.
Do you wanna vote?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. Uh, resolution 2290 has been approved. Mr. Mayor?
Alright, thank you. Alright, congratulations.
Congratulations.
New businesses, we'll move to the new businesses. Resolution A, I'm sorry, item A Resolution 2022-112 approving the contract for the general liability policy.
Hold on.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is the annual coverage for the city of Hamtramck. We use Platten Locker Group, which is a broker for insurance, cities been using them since 2013 to shop around for policies. We landed on Liberty Mutual Insurance, which I believe we've had consistently. The coverage stays the same, premium slightly up, but this is pretty much just going through the motions of getting our insurance really.
Any more discussion? Yes, Councilman. I know it is GOP, general liability insurance for the entire city. The number is pretty high, you know, it's a half a million dollar premium, 437,792 dollars. That's a, almost half a million. Would you be able to like, better, um, road to find a company that would be the lower premiums, that would save us a little money? I could fix about six, seven alleys with that money. That's much I needed to fix the roads and alleys. But I know it is essential, it's required in order to, I'm in insurance business, so I already know, I believe in insurance. So it's something, you know, to look into it later on.
Mr. Mayor, may I? Uh, Councilman, to answer your question, we will have some internal conversations with the department heads and see what we can do to look at, to try to get that lowered if we can moving forward. I would recommend we pass it now because we need insurance, but nonetheless, I, we're definitely gonna explore options to see what we can do to try and beat that down for sure.
Mr. Chair, I really appreciate Councilman Sodri, he has enough knowledge. And his opinion is if you don't argue and you don't request insurance companies, just send the bill. Like last week, my house, came the my car insurance bill, was a big number. I didn't pay attention and I didn't look at that, and under my bank account, I see almost negative, what's going on? So then I called the insurance company, bring the 1,000 less, some other reason, same insurance company, other reason. So those kinds of thing, we have to, next time, go ahead and we're gonna approve it. Next time, anything like that, if anybody experienced from the, our, our council, and maybe we can involve with that. And then that's why they can, okay, I got it, this company telling me this and you have this, see if he can go back to that number. Like those kinds of thing, we have to look at, we try to save $1, and then that's all.
Alright, thank you. So, we can, are you saying we can pass it and negotiate with the company?
Yeah, we can still give the permission.
I, I think we've reached our immediate limit, where, where we're gonna get with them, I mean, because we definitely have explored that. But I believe there's things internally we can do within the city, to the various departments, to protect us more at liability end. Particularly in the police department, there's some things, some adjustments that can be made, which I believe we can then drive the premium down at a later date. So we've actually had some internal conversations in regards to that already.
Alright, any more discussion?
Councilman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Would you like to vote, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, resolution 22-112 approving the contract for general liability policy passed.
Alright, moving to the next one. Resolution 2022-113 approving acceptance of firefighting equipment grant.
Mr. Mayor, hold on a second.
Motion.
Second.
Our, our fire chief is here, he can speak a little bit on the grant.
Good evening. Earlier this year, we did apply for this grant, we do it annually through the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program through FEMA. We applied this year for new fire nozzles, some hose, and some gated wires, which is a, an appliance that we use to deliver water to the fire. This will be the largest purchase of nozzles we've had in probably 30 years. We're still using the nozzles when I got hired in, in the late 90s, so. This is a good grant, the cost to the city is only right around $1,200, it's a 10% match with the FEMA. Any questions?
Will this replace all of the nozzles?
This will replace all of our frontline nozzles and allow us to have some, they're still serviceable, to be in reserve, and it will allow us, allow us to completely equip our reserve engine. So right now, if we need to use that other engine, we have to shift equipment over. This is gonna allow us to be much closer to having that rig ready for service.
No issue?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Jakowski? Yes. Mr. Mayor, would you like to vote?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, resolution 22113 approving acceptance of firefighting equipment grant has passed.
Uh, next one is Resolution 2022-114 approving acceptance of SIM card sliding assistant grant.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have Ms. Blockner here to speak a little bit.
Oh, good evening. I just wanna give a little overview of this grant and of this project. This is part of the 30-mile freeway, Joe Louis Greenway project, which runs mainly through Detroit, but would be coming through Hamtramck's downtown. Part of the goals are just sustainability in terms of promoting cycling and, and walking and, and just any kind of physical activity, as well as economic development, because it would come through our downtown and that concept there is that people will stop, job, you know, enjoy the downtown. Now, the original plan, this is a project that's been going on for more than 10 years, has that part of the freeway routing through the alley, that is done in a few places around the country, but it's quite unique and there's a lot of design challenges. They would not close it off to automobiles in terms of deliveries, so it wouldn't be closed. But we would make combinations so that it can be a shared use path. So the grant is really to have planners or engineers spend time designing that and looking into examples and doing public engagement to figure out, how would we make this work? I don't think this project will be complete for a couple of years in terms of actually constructing it. This is planning to answer some of those questions that many people in the community have. How, how would this possibly work coming through the alleyway? So, that's basically the overview of the grant, do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I just wanna like, so what is the, what is your vision? Or let me play like, what does it look like in?
You mean the alleyway?
Yeah, alleyway.
So the vision was developed long before I got here. We actually now have a link on our website under Parks, Joe Louis Greenway, and it links to many of the plans that have been made over the last 10 years with multiple consultants. I have seen neat alleys in other places where you can, you know, still have some deliveries, but there might be cool lighting, a little bypass, activities going on. I've seen something like that in Detroit and in other places. Some of the challenges include, right now, you know, dumpsters, like there's a lot of challenges to acknowledge and I'm not quite sure what it would look like and how we would look through all those challenges, but, anyone can go online and check out the visioning that has already been done. I did bring out capacities around. This is one image that has been published before of an alley pathway. But in terms of just dealing with the issues of the design, that's really what this grant would accomplish.
See, we use, our residents still use this alleyway as a road, you know? And this is the only alleyways in southeast Michigan, but at least that we use that alleyway as a road again. And I, I don't, I mean, I, I hope there's never gonna be conflicts with the residents coming through in and out, you know? Many of them, like I say, use the alleyway as a, as a road.
For, we're talking about deliveries or just getting through?
Getting through, you know, during the festivals, during the festivals, I mean, this is behind the KEC, right, Joseph Campolo?
Yeah, part of it, not the whole thing.
Would it be an issue?
Uh, that's what they would look at, so I have a little, on page 10 of the grant, it talks about what the design would permit. So it says the design will permit vehicle access to the alley, businesses, and parking. This is page 10 and 11. However, at low speeds and as a secondary use. So cars can still go through, but it wouldn't be something we would want anybody zooming down either. Which we wouldn't want anyway, so, at, at this point, so.
Thank you, Councilman.
I just wanna, I, I'm familiar with, of this project a little bit, so I kinda wanna just kinda build on the answer a little bit. Would be that, one of the reasons that this project is really interesting is projects like this actually reduce the need for cars to come in for things like festivals and stuff like that, because they're gonna be, people, this is going to be a lighted paved pathway that people can ride their bikes in if they're coming from Ferndale or Southwest or any of these other places. It's gonna be easier for them to get in with alternate modes of transportation that's actually going to alleviate a lot of the parking issues that we have for summer events. Now in winter, there's gonna be a lot less people making use of them for things like that, but it'll still encourage people to do year-round cycling, because in the winter, one of the issues with cycling at night is it gets dark. But now we have a lighted, protected pathway, right? And so this is opening alternate modes of transportation to be used for those things that do bring a lot of congestion in. Even things like DCFC games, right? They bring 8,000 people, there's a lot of people who'd like to ride their bikes in, but then they're trying to get home after dark. But this path goes about 30 miles through Detroit, down to Dearborn, so it opens up that transportation to so many people. And so I definitely think, if, if you didn't go to the event last year, I definitely think this is the Sunday event that I mentioned in the community announcements, by the way. And it, they, they set up like some bump outs and they make it look like what it's going to look like-ish once it's finished. And obviously, this grant is going to give us a much better idea if we get affirmed to help us make sure that we do get all of the lines of traffic working together, so.
And I just wanna highlight again, since we do now have a page regarding the Joe Louis Greenway on our city of Hamtramck website, I would just encourage anyone to check it out, to see some of the concepts for the whole freeway, as well as some of the concepts for our city. And again, you know, the final design is really, that's part of the process of having this event on the 25th and hiring an engineering or consulting firm.
Councilman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, resolution 22114 approving acceptance of SIM card planning assistance grant has been passed.
Alright, next one is Resolution 2022-115 approving recruitment incentives for the Hamtramck Police Department.
Hold on.
Second. Um, Max, wanna explain?
Absolutely. Uh, I met with Councilman Chowdhury in regards to this and asked him to spearhead this for us. As you're aware, police recruitment across the nation right now is devastating. It's, it's hard for anyone to hire police officers. We're having even more difficulty in that probably than most. We're currently short in the police department, we've been for a long time, we can't seem to bring our staffing levels up. So, in short, we're being very creative in all our ways to try and recruit police officers. The thought process was behind this to essentially turn all of our city employees into recruiters and offer an incentive for anyone that could potentially recruit a police officer, reserve officer, or dispatcher. This is all three positions we are just constantly filling, and it incentivizes them to do that. If they successfully refer a candidate, they would be entitled to a $500 bonus for it. If that candidate successfully stays for a full year, they would be entitled to another $500 for that. So the thought is hopefully everybody is on board recruiting for this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I think I just have one question, is what part of the budget is this coming from?
Police.
Police.
So if I grant someone of this $500?
You are paid by the city.
We have employee cards.
Yeah. There, there are some catches, you have to be actually on their application, you gotta bring them forward. I mean, so we're, we're shoring it up internally to make sure it's just not wild, you know, of course.
Alright, any more discussion? Right, let's vote.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Jakowski?
Yes.
Council, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, resolution 22-115 approving recruitment incentives for the Hamtramck Police Department is approved.
Alright, we'll move to the next one. Resolution 2022-116 approving implementation of hiring incentives to Hamtramck Police Department. Make a motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I actually, prior had spoke to Councilman Samiri, who unfortunately couldn't make it tonight to spearhead this, and he agreed, and instead I asked Councilman Chowdhury to pick up the spear on this one. It's another incentive to try and recruit. There are a lot of costs involved in bringing on police officers. Quite often, when a police officer gets hired, they're very young in their career and not financially well-off at that point. And as an incentive, we are proposing that $1,000 be spent towards their gear so that they don't have to pay for it out of pocket, and we're hoping that that'll also help to attract candidates.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'm just curious on how this work, are we giving them a check for $1,000 to buy it? We're purchasing the, they're telling us the size and whatnot and we place the order?
Yes. Yes, I mean, it's not, we're just giving them a check, we're, it's specifically going to be for gear. There'll be internal policies guiding this. Not entirely sure if we'll have them go order it and we'll pay the bill yet, or exactly how we'll administer it, but there certainly will be controls on it.
They're not gonna be more than $1,000, right?
Correct, that's the gap.
Alright.
Uh, Councilman Jakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, resolution 22-116 approving implementation of hiring incentives for Hamtramck Police Department, approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2022-117 approving Michigan Indigenous Defense Commission Grant and Amendment of the 2022-23 budget. Make a motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor? So this one should look familiar, one very similar just became, just came before this body. I think it was in the last meeting or the meeting before, for last year's that we were tidying up. This one's for this year, it's an annual grant to the state in the Indigenous Defense Fund. Basically, we matched part of it, but it pays for attorneys for the defense of indigenous defendants.
Like it's attorney appointed by the inmates or the plenty, you know? The grant money will take care of the appointed attorneys.
Correct.
Who cannot afford it?
Correct.
That's what it's for.
Alright.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Jakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 22-117 approving Michigan Indigent Defense Commission Grant and Amendment of the 22-23 Budget has been approved.
Thank you. Now, we move to the reports. We start with the mayor report. Over the past two weeks, I think the major events that we attended were the Labor Day Festival in Hamtramck, which stayed for three days. So, we were there. I saw most of the city council members there. We enjoyed it. It was fun. It was a very successful event. So, I'd like to thank again the organizing committee that took this initiative to organize it for the first time, and it was a great success for the city. In the meantime, we had the soccer championship for the Yemeni-American United Communities came from multiple states, from New York, California, Mississippi, Tennessee, Alabama. And so, we had so many guests who visited the festival at the same time and enjoyed it. They actually thought that Hamtramck is like that all year long. So, it was fun. And we had the championship soccer games. It was fun as well to place here in Hamtramck and in Dearborn. The opening ceremony and the closing ceremony was in Hamtramck. Unfortunately, this time, Hamtramck soccer team didn't win, but it was still here in Michigan. Dearborn team won the championship. So, I would like also to thank the organizing committee for that championship and the sponsors and the audience that attended. There was thousands in the Keynote Stadium. I would like to thank the police who attended despite being busy with the festival. So, thank you, everyone. Other than that, we didn't have other events that happened. So, that was my report. We'll move now to the mayor's report.
Mr. Chair, I was so busy at work, I didn't go anywhere. So, one good thing, my one of the friends, Dr. Saleem Ahmed, came from Bangladesh. He's the professor at Chitang University and the Bangladesh Finance Building Finance Director is the Board of Chairman, and one of the bank, he was the Board of Chairman. So, I was busy with him and with all the other university students, former students, alumni association. I went to the couple of Bengali-Mangalishi events that were basically, and the Labor Day Festival, it was very successful, and we're glad we don't have any other issues. Previously, we used to have little issues. So, that's the good thing. The diverse community program was very successful and very good. Thanks for organizer. Thanks for my colleagues who was gone there, especially Councilman Naim Shodri. He's expending a lot of time right now with the community even, even though I cannot do it. So, he goes to there, and of course, Councilwoman Amanda always been with the community initiative. Anything update. So, thank you, guys, as a team. You guys making me proud too. Thank you.
Thank you. I also forgot to mention the Bengali North American Festival. I was there too. It's been a long time. It feels like it's been a month. But I was invited by Councilman Naim Chowdhury. Thank you. It was a great event as well. And I forgot to mention that we had some guests who the city hall came last week, last Friday, an organization called the Arab American Foundation. I received them here with Max, and we awarded them a certificate of appreciation for visiting our city. And another event, I just had an interview with a Jazira English an hour ago here, here in the city, city council chair. They just left an hour ago. So, these are some of the activities that I just remembered. Sorry. So, we'll move now to the city council reports. Yes, Councilwoman?
Mine is pretty short. I was just letting everyone know that the second meeting of the SEMCOG Legislative Task Force was this morning, and so, we've been working on drafting the legislative policy that SEMCOG is going to be advocating for over the next, you know, time period until. Next one, and I've been very pleased with how it's coming together, and I am really looking forward to continuing to work with SEMCOG and, you know, advocating for things that are going to help the southeast Michigan region, but also specifically Hamtramck too. There's some things on there, like, you know, with like funding sources, there's things with schools, there's a lot of topics covered, and all of them seem to be very positive towards what our community needs. And so, I'm excited to share some of that with you as we continue forward.
Thank you. Councilman Chowdhury?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. Thank you for your valuable time. As our mayor, councilwoman, and Councilman Hassan mentioned, we had a festival, it's called North American Baladisi Festival 2022 at the Jane Field. It was, it turned out very well. 25,000 people came through, three days, and they had a blessing time. We also enjoyed our Labor Day festivals. Always, I mean, ever since I moved here, I noticed this is a fun time when it comes to September, Labor Day weekend. So, and we did a parade. I think this is the first time I ever attended a parade on Monday afternoon with my kids, my son and daughter. So, we dressed up colorful with our custom dress up, you know, Bangladeshi Asian clothes, and a bunch of my friends came out, and I want to thank them too for being there that day, and we played and we walked through this, this Camp Nou. It was fun. And I wanted to say one thing today. I'd like to thank you, the committee of the Labor Day Festival Committee that organized everything. But I hope next time they put more information out there for the other vendors and people to communicate, to connect with them. A lot of those vintage and vendors and those small entrepreneur business owners couldn't get through that. Last meeting, it was hard. So, I would say more available informations, more communication to the communities, since this is a very bilingual, very diverse community, they would need more informations from this committee. I appreciate it. With this being said, let's all have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Move to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, city hall's very busy. Our department heads are working really hard between all the construction grants and just general city business going on. One of the things of note that we're doing is we're switching all the city credit cards over to Huntington Bank, which is the bank we generally bank with, so we have a little more control over that. Few updates from DPW that Director Diamond sent over. He couldn't make it tonight. Normally, he's an all-star at the podium, but tonight he couldn't make it. He wanted to say, wanted me to say that after Evoline is done with the lead service lines, we're switching over to Prescott between Ellery and Conant. We just hired two full-time employees in the DPW. We finally received our new trucks, both with plows and one with a salter, so that'll be good for the winter coming up. The repaving is continuing throughout the city. Filters and replacement cartridges are still available as always in DPW for the water, for potential lead water. The water payment plans, the RAP, the LEWAP, and the MHA assistant programs are all still available. And down there, please keep referring people over who need help. A couple of things out of CED, even though Carolyn's here. Recently, Carolyn worked with, her and her staff worked with Arts and Culture and DDA for the 100th anniversary banners on Joseph Campo. They're out there now. The Arts and Culture Commission provided the design, and the DDA paid for them, and they got them up. They're installed. On the 25th of September, the Joe Louis Greenway Alley Event will be in the alley. It's on a Sunday. I believe we posted it on the city website for more details, and I think we also sent it to mayor and council. Yep, councilwoman has it there, and I believe Carolyn has copies as well. Code Enforcement now has five officers, four full-time and one full-time. I'm hoping to see good things coming out of code. That's the most we've ever had in there. We're finally fully staffed there. Very excited about that. And lastly, we have a little bit of update from the city clerk, which I'll let her take the reins on that.
Oh, okay. Hello. So, I actually wanted him to speak, but I'll go ahead and do it. So, typically, before each election season, let me put the, before each election season, we send out AV applications to voters to fill out and let us know if they want a ballot for both August and the November election. So, those who have already submitted those applications, you're good to go for both elections. Unfortunately, there's some organizations, Democratic Parties, organizations, I guess, of all sorts, that are flooding our city with new applications because they want people to get out to vote. So, they're sending them new AV applications, sending them new voter registrations, and they literally sent it out to every resident here. So, the residents are calling us, saying, "Didn't I already fill it out? Did something happen to my application? Am I getting a ballot in November?" So, it's really making people a little confused. And it says, "Return to the city clerk's office in Hamtramck." So, it has my address and whatnot. So, they're thinking it's coming from us. If you have applied for AV application, if you've already submitted an application to us, you're good to go. If you have not, yes, use those applications. They're great, they're great materials to use if it's needed, but do not take it the wrong way. It's not coming from us. We did not mess up in the clerk's office. All of your applications are still with us, and we're going to process them for this November election. So, again, any applications that you receive for AV applications or registrations are coming from an outside source, not from our office. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? The man in clerk was passionate about this because it's causing them all kinds of heartache in clerk's office, so I figured I should.
Yeah, because we, yeah, we've received dozens and dozens, probably hundreds of applications already. So, it's really making us, so it's duplicating all of our work. We're constantly receiving these applications, scanning through the system, trying, thinking they're not registered, thinking they're not set up for AV applications when they're all duplicates. So, people are literally just duplicating their previous application.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. We will go back again to the public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a comment that I forgot to read in the first public comment. It's off the agenda, my fault. I'm going to run through it real quick. This is from Milo Madol. Is that how you pronounce Amanda Madol? No? Milo? 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 As a Hamtramck resident and a member of the DDA, I want to first state that I am very excited by what feels like a more productive and communicative relationship between local boards and the current council. This is important to creating and engaging successful Hamtramck, and council should be commended for opening that door. Thank you. More specifically, on the issue of finding a permanent replacement for the city manager position, I wanted to reiterate the recommendations contained in the DDA's resolution, which was previously provided to council. Further, if the professional search firm discussed and approved at the prior council meeting has not yet been engaged, it would seem critical that this is, that that is done without delay so that the search can go forward in a professional and efficient manner. Finding a skilled, capable, and dedicated city manager for the city is a matter of vital importance to the well-being of the community, and the city will not be operating at full capacity until this role is filled. Using a third-party search firm to identify skilled and qualified candidates for council to consider was a great decision by council and one that we hope can be implemented as soon as possible. Thank you, Milo.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, no, with this one, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I want to suspend the law because of how the public comment came to the late before our discussion, before our report. So, that's why I want to suspend the law. I want back to go to the report, and I have to speak later. Okay with that, everybody?
You want to speak now, or do you want me to finish? From the comments? Oh, you could go ahead. You can speak on this part. Go ahead. This comment is done.
Okay.
You can speak on this one if you'd like.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I want to clear one thing. DDA or who, whom, don't want to dictate us what I should do. Our things, we are doing. Third-party, I've been, I've been around that. We hired the third-party, brought a lot of junk applicant here. Okay? So, very clear to everybody right now, from my side, our city not going to expend any money to bring third-party to bring the application. The formal process is this Michigan Municipal League, hamtramckcity.com, hamtramckcityhr, hamtramckcitymanager. How hard is that? So, again and again, managerial appointment, hiring is up to four board. There's no question about it. And here is DDA looking for application, how many, to the manager. DDA have to start with the DDA. Nothing else, their own business. Very clear. So, again and again, matter of fact, Mr. Mayor, you're the one appointing the DDA people. I want you to be a little careful also who you hire in the DDA appointing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Does I have a comment? I'm actually going to disagree with my colleague on this one, but respectfully, is that we actually unanimously passed a resolution that included that we would use a third-party search firm. And in that, that was a request that came strongly from the community, and they made it very clear that if we don't use a third-party search firm, that they will not have confidence in the city manager that we end up finding. And so, I think it would be a misstep if we decided to do that behind closed doors as the community was under the impression that we were going to be using a third-party search firm. And so, if that decision is going to be changed, it should be discussed and voted on at a council meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Can I continue?
Yeah. Any public comments?
Thank you. Ms. Vera Burke would like to speak for a moment?
Thank you, ma'am.
Absolutely.
To the mayor, the council, and our interim city manager, I have just a few things to say about the meeting tonight. I told the city clerk I would be lenient this time, but one of the problems I had sitting here, I couldn't understand, the mic, I guess, was low. She fixed that. But we couldn't understand the council people talking, and that's been a long time, even at me sitting at home trying to hear. It's terrible. We can't understand what she's talking about. Was this a private meeting between the council? That's what it sounded like when you're sitting back here. So, I'm asking the city manager and whoever else involved to get the mics fixed good so we can hear it if we're home or if we're here. That's something to help the city. That's my, that's my thing. Do something good for the city. So, if you work on that, because I get a lot of calls like they think I still work for the city. I don't. Get the fix so the people at home that can't come out can enjoy the council without straining their ears. The next time I come to meeting, I'll be here on another issue.
Ms. Burke, can I ask you a question? Do you watch it on cable? Do you watch it on YouTube?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I watch it on cable. And now, I watch it on TV.
You have very good sound from Channel 9.
Hey, hey, hey. Do you want to take this, you want to take this outside, Craig?
So, I can complain to Craig, and I can complain to you, and also the city manager, though I will complain to you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comment.
Okay, so, we move to adjourn. I make a motion?
Second.
It's 8:11 PM.
Okay, thank you.